Commissioners, the meeting is live.
It's going fine.
It's I it's playing, it takes, there's a delay for when it actually, like a thirty second delay between when it starts recording and when it goes.
Actually shows up here.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll play on the speakers now, so I have to wait and turn it off. But anyway, thank you.
Okay, well, morning, welcome to the May fifth meeting, Riley County Commissioners, please stand and join the pledge of leave.
We're being.
I'm gonna do anybody's duty to fly one of the states of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the island indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you might have public comments. Morning.
I think I recognize you.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Gary Oles, I live at thirty three oh eight Frontier Circle. Should probably also say good morning to our other elected officials sitting up here. Don't mean to include you when I say that. Most of the time, if if not nearly all the time, when I want to visit with you publicly, it's regarding property taxes. That this today, this morning's no different. I see that this is kind of the, maybe the beginnings or the first meeting of the appropriations for outside agencies, the, I think I saw on the agenda, other budget discussion topics, although looking over this, I don't seem on here, but that's beside the point, maybe I'm reading the wrong one. I just want to continue to remind you that I believe it was last year you had a discussion, at least from talking with Brittany, you had a discussion about how much of property tax and sales tax, which all classify as general fund, needs to be allocated or should or shouldn't be allocated toward outside agencies, or what you call as some type of non-government agency NGO, I guess that would be appropriate. I want to encourage you to bring that discussion back up because I think that when we look at taxes, specifically property taxes, I think most people have the mindset that when I'm paying my property taxes, I'm getting government service. That's that's the trade off. I don't think that's true of outside agencies. Not that they're not important, don't get me wrong, but the property taxes that we pay are for government services. I think it's a stretch to say an NGO is a government service, whether it's Pawnee or Beable or whatever. I'm not saying they shouldn't be funded, but I think there should be some kind of guidelines that you all have, and I realize you can't obligate future county commissioners, but some type of guidelines that help you to run through a matrix of, I think last year you talked about maybe one point five mils, which is kind of ironic because you're not really going to pay it out of mills, you're just using that as a formula because that's all property taxes, that's not sales taxes. Obviously, the bulk of the revenue is from property taxes, and so it all mixes into one pot, but I just want to continue to encourage you as you look through this long list of appropriations. I looked over the flyer that you printed and, you know, it's going to get longer every year, every year, every year. You may not be on the commission, but some kind of guideline for for commissioners in the future, not set in stone, to help you to not, I hate to say it this way, but it's probably the best way I can say it, not be too generous with the taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jacob Hansen, Deputy County Counselor, just coming up here on public comment to request that we swap what we have listed executive session at nine forty AM with what we have as our work session at ten twenty. I got four here at nine, so there's a slight chance that I may not be here. And so I have our executive session up and then if I run over a little bit on the administrative work session, so.
Senseless to do that more to you.
Yeah. Thanks, Jacob.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer. Most importantly, my question is, what do you want for lunch next Monday? So I know John's not going to be able to eat. But.
I'll be fast.
Lobster.
I already asked that and.
I mean, he designated me a budget, I mean, he said the Budget and Finance Officer's budget, I don't know what that is, but.
If she doesn't have a budget, she just pays for it out of her pocket, it's all right. No, I'll have to fast on that day for a doctor's appointment, though, you guys do whatever.
Jelly sandwiches without no bun, just real bread.
Okay. McAllisters, okay. Perfect.
Can't get a flight from Longhorns.
I tried, I tried.
And then I will some good soup over there, though, some of yesterday.
Um, to go off of Gary's comment, so last year, yes, we talked about one and a half mils, and so we calculated that out. And that, just to give you an idea, for last year's budget was one million two hundred and thirty eight thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars, would have been what it calculated out to for one and a half mils. Um, and then the amount appropriations that we gave in general and economic development, but excluding Health Department, Community Corrections Extension, obviously, RCPD is separate, and then we have a Conza Water Bond Payment that's also paid out of economic development, excluded those out, so that total that we budgeted for to pay for twenty twenty five is one million two hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, so a little over that one and a half bills, so just have something to think about as we start off. Thank you.
Anyone else? What Commissioner comments?
Okay, well, Thursday afternoon, met with the team for Make My Move to discuss a proposal that's actually eighty percent state funded, twenty percent other, meeting with the chamber and some other people to get some possible ideas for that. Thursday afternoon, I attended the ribbon cutting audit eighteen hundred beef located at nine hundred Points Avenue here downtown. They offer a premium selection of beef products rooted in seven generations of local ranching up by the Randolph area in North, North County, owned by Andy and Sarah Larson. The retail store also features high quality beef, kitchen and pantry items, western inspired goods, handcrafted jewelry, artwork, locally sourced products and more, had some great products and threw some great burgers. I brought samples, brought samples. I ate a whole bag of the Hickory Maple on my own, so help me out here.
The attorneys aren't there at all.
No, they sold it.
They sold it.
Yeah, they added on to their building up across the way there and then sold that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's that's where they're at, and they, it's set up a little differently, it's not set up like a regular store, kind of come in and you kind of pick out what you want, and they've got the freezers kind of disappeared back there and stuff, so it's really cool, they did a good job setting it up.
And I'm not sure if I heard wrong or not dumb, but I think it's eighteen hundred, I think it's eighteen eighty.
Eighteen eighty, yeah.
I didn't know if you had it in your notes.
No, I didn't, I I've got it right on there, I just said it wrong, so. Eighteen.
I've been going by the sign, I couldn't forget.
Yeah, I have a feeling we're gonna, we're gonna be really good friends.
I mean, I knew, I didn't know that's who was doing it, but I saw the paper, that was Indian.
Yeah, I had quite the turnout, I guess when you cook free burgers and stuff. Yeah, it was good, it was really good. Um, also Thursday afternoon, I attended the May meeting via Zoom of the Flint Hills Mental Health Task Force. Amongst the items of discussion, there was an update at the CSU, I'll talk about that here in just a second separately, but surveys, survey results from a recent Flint Hills Mental Health Task Force survey, in direction which the board should be going and the working and goals of the membership team, discussion on the upcoming Mental Health Summit that will be taking place out in Hayes later on in the year, and discussion of the history of the Flint Hills Mental Health Task Force and how it's moved forward over the years. Um, let's see, and we discussed the, I don't know, we've discussed it here already, but the Kansas Community Health Rankings, Mobile Crisis, the nine nine eight line, seemed a lot be, seems to be a lot of confusion with the new membership, with the purpose of this task force and what it really should be doing, so we'll continue to work on this the upcoming months, and we'll have a plan. We'll plan on meeting again in June, and we'll continue to put the plan together for that. Friday morning, I met with Riley County IT Director Cory Meyer, discussed some items relevant to his department, including upgrades, technology in general, cybersecurity, nineteen maintenance, the new county facilities moving forward, to name a few. Had a good dialogue, left with a conversation with plenty to think about for sure. Also on Friday, I met with Amy Mangus, Riley County Registered Deeds, to get caught up with everything that's going on in their department, and discussed a few items of importance as well. Looks like they've got some new furniture to have relayed out the office in there, you can actually kind of move around and stuff in there now, yeah, they did a pretty good job putting that together, put some new carpet and stuff in there as well, so good for them, we needed to do that. Been kind of boxed off in there for quite some times, so going to open things up a little bit. Also on Friday afternoon, I had a late afternoon Teams call with Derek Verlange and staff from KDHE, along with Diane Creek, Riley County Health Department Director, and Caitlin Speth from the WIC Department to discuss some funding potentials and discuss the current licensing challenges that's taking place up on Fort Riley. Didn't really find a solution of sorts, but did provide plenty of clarity, at least on the situation. Got some work to do there, obviously. Weekend was rather quiet, started out working through all the materials for the upcoming budget hearings today and on Thursday, and took it easy outside of that. Did want to mention one last thing here, and I got this late on Friday, but the CSU, speaking of that from earlier, is now not going to be the CSU anymore. They are going to move that new name for that, it's going to be called the Behavioral Health Access Center. Will still include crisis services, it's not going anywhere, but CSU will still be included, there will be a social detox and same day access, all kind of wrapped up into the same facility now, so they're providing some little bit more integrated services to go along with the CCBHC model. They are still trying to transfer over to, so just wanted to let everybody know that, that when you hear that name, that's what everything means now, so. And that's all I've got this morning.
Okay. Well, let's see, Thursday afternoon, I had my first session of water PT at the Via Christie Therapy Center, apparently it's the only one in the region. I have sessions scheduled for twice a week through the end of May. Friday morning, standard plumbing did the biannual check of my furnace and air conditioning system. They also checked several faucets in the house, one in the kitchen that will need to be replaced as they had an installation problem five years ago, new house. That could cost more to fix than getting a new faucet. Later that afternoon, had a CT scan and an appointment with the neurosurgeon at Storm Lake Vale. He didn't think back surgery is necessary at this time. As it's very intense and recover, surgery and recovery, I'm getting around fairly well at this point. I continue, I'll continue, supposed to continue with the PT and other exercises. I adjust my activities to take care of my back, like lifting, lawn mowing, snow shoveling, et cetera. So it's a follow up with him in three months or as needed, so that was good news, I thought pretty good about that. Saturday, I went to the K State Gardens for the annual tulip sale. I was in line for about forty five minutes, but they ran out of tulips right when I got to the front of the line. That's two years. I'm going to give up on it, you know.
You should just go out early and put up a tent and tailgate and.
We're giving out too, too many at the beginning, and you know, the people that got, they had like five bags each person. Yeah, I thought they were saying the limited to five bags, but I figured they'd be little bags, but these were like grocery bags full of tulips, so I, you know, whatever, but I think, well, the iris, iris sale's a little easier to deal with, they usually have more iris, I guess. Never had problems there, but anyway, I'm not doing that again, so. Um, went downtown in the afternoon, was amazed at the amount of people out shopping and milling around downtown, going to the restaurants, it was really, really good. Did stop in to flight proof for some chai latte and then spent the rest of the day at home cooking soup and some, I did do some, you know, which is acceptable, so. Sunday went to church, met some friends for lunch, and then worked on today's agenda items and documents, so it's a busy, busy week here, so. That's all I have.
On Friday, I had a meeting with Jacob Hansen, the Councilor of Office, about what's going on there, looking at the future there, but then also just spent some time getting to know him better personally, ahead and ahead at the time, so. Both from Topeka, so.
Lots to talk about.
And then since then, started reviewing things for the budget coming up this week and next week. Getting my mindset around, but it's going to take.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And although I did get, see, it was nice out Saturday. I got out. A little bit of stuff in New York. That's all I've got.
Ready for business, Commissioners? First time I had any motion to approve low bid, Shilling Construction Inc., Manhattan, twenty twenty five asphalt overlay program, alternate number one, the amount of one million two hundred and eighty eight thousand nine eighty five, and alternates number two, one million four hundred and forty four thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, contract throws June fifteen, starting date.
Ryan make a motion to approve the bid from Shilling Construction Inc. as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved in seconds to approve the bids from Shilling Construction as presented for all of those one and two, all in favor.
Commissioners, any motion to approve a little bit submitted by APAC Kansas Inc. of Emporia, and twenty twenty five by Tuminus Chip Seal Project, the amount of one hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred and four dollars and thirty one cents. Make a motion to approve the bid from APAC Kansas out of Emporia in the amount of one hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred and four dollars and thirty one cents.
I'll second that.
Been moved in seconds to approve the bid from APAC Kansas for the Chip Seal Project, the amount of one hundred and sixty eight thousand five hundred and four dollars thirty one cents, all in favor.
Next, Commissioners, any motion on the tax rule correction?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the tax rule correction.
I'll second.
Been moved in second to approve the tax rule correction, all in favor.
All right.
Chair, please sign. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Next, Commissioners, I have Riley County Employee Action Forum, Mackenzie McGinnis, new hire, Administrative Assistant to Emergency Management Fire Department, Haller, a new hire, Utility Tech, and Public Tech Department, all three, please sign.
Thanks, Laura.
Any changes to the minutes, Commissioners?
I have anything either. Go ahead and make a motion then to approve the minutes that's written from the May first meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved in second to approve the minutes of the May first meeting as presented, all in favor.
How the tentative agenda's look, Commissioners?
Well, get it longer.
Agreed, agreed, I blame it on Brittany.
I do, too.
I told him that Finance Officer's hard, so really.
Came back with that, so.
You'll be surprised how budgets look this, this year, I think, yeah, they look really good.
Uh, any items for next week's press conference? Okay, next you have Mr. Bowler at nine o'clock.
You start us off this year, huh?
He was the first one to turn it in, too. So it's only fitting.
I haven't seen, we still see. I bet they don't see. I wasn't aware of that. Kind of scratching my head a little bit because I answered one deep, it's one that I seen. There's round, but it's not, it's not quite, you know, that's other. It doesn't work, from my experience, and we start selling at forty four percent. Oh, yeah, well, that's definitely. I mean, they, they have. Found the persistent, so even, so I think it's so even, but they need. I've looked several places. Yeah, they've got, you know, the use on the long line, and what people be except it's, you know, and it has more for everything.
Upcoming schedule for June. I know there's a lot, maybe.
A lot worth getting stressed, you know, I just have one to turn about.
Yeah.
What's in there?
I'm thinking of, this is my daughter.
Of course, that's, that's the.
Yeah, that was. I said, I checked the schedule, would be like this.
There's only one company.
Yeah.
Has been making.
So the rest of the week.
I wonder if that's, how long has it been?
Actually, that's holiday, Juneteenth, the nineteenth. Yeah, commercially. Shows that time period. Oh.
Agrelate.
We don't really have anything scheduled.
No, that's, this is all we've got right now, it's just half times. Am I hearing those out there?
Well, I don't know, I mean.
Okay.
We're, we're looking at, before it was earlier, but.
And I don't think it's.
It just depends on.
We had some.
Yeah. Flying is not one of them. Especially I have to sit like this, I get a bump in.
That's not how that works.
I can't sit for an hour without it.
I damn it.
Take lots of ivy growth and.
It just stands for ready to use.
I can't say I've got noxious weed in my driveway, I need to.
Potential could, you need to know which noxious weed you're buying chemical for, if you're going to come out and buy chemicals.
Ones with the little thin leaves, looks a lot like grass, but I don't think that's.
It's probably not that, I don't think. We've got ours pulled, this weekend, by the way.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't.
Yeah, we have some, there's some that we're going to have to go back in, we couldn't, the roots out completely.
Notification that the printer is low on toner.
Did he pull it and sell it?
That's the case. I got everything except for the afternoon.
Poison M lock, they still have poison.
Yeah.
Keeping it low, anything, especially when it starts to grow. Then you level it, you'll be fine, but just know that. And they're really, some people have dermal reactions to them, but it's really as bad if it's ingested, and if it is ingested, there is no antidote, it's likely baby food.
Let's get carried on, Michael, like that.
Yeah.
She's got dogs, she's got kids.
Socrates. And there is, there's no antidote to this, they can just, they're going to have a.
Yep, we didn't ingest it. We threw it in a pile on the outside of her.
Every year, there's somebody that comes in, they're soaking that, and they get it on their skin, and they get some in their mouth, and the thing is very, very serious.
Michael, how long does that last, like, do you need to burn?
Well, it can grow like.
No, like after you cut it, you said, still poisonous after.
Yeah, it can remain poisonous, especially if it deteriorates, or as long as it's still a living type substance. Cattle usually, if cattle. But it's really high in tan. They generally won't eat it, but cattle will eat anything, there's nothing considered. So only people that have low pastures down there, they'll have some poison. Don't this, that, that gets stirred through.
Good morning, commissioners, Mike Bowler with the Riley County Noxious Weed, HHW with my twenty twenty-six budget request. Uh, starting off with contractual services, uh, the request is one twenty-seven seven ten, which is an increase of fifteen hundred dollars. There's only one line item in that budget that I've requested an increase in, and that line item was twenty-one twenty-two, which is. Fleet vehicle insurance, I think everybody was warned that we're going to see a substantial insurance, uh, increase. And so I have prepared for that line item, which I am proposing a fifteen hundred dollar increase. Commodities request is nineteen three fifty, all these line items in this category remain neutral from the twenty twenty-five, uh, budget. We've seen the stabilization of cost of many chemicals, including fertilizer and seed, um, that sort of thing from COVID. Do you recall that skyrocketed during that budget year? Uh, but we've seen that stabilized, and so, uh, those line items request remain neutral for twenty twenty-six. Um, capital A, outlay request is ten thousand seven seventy, which also remains neutral from the twenty twenty-five budget. The total budget request for the twenty twenty-six contractual services, commodities, and capital outlay. Is two fifty-seven eight thirty, which is an increase of fifteen hundred dollars or less than one percent over the twenty twenty-five budget. A total of operating expenditures, including personnel, is nine one six two five seven, which is an overall reduction of two point seven two percent from the twenty twenty-five. Uh, that has something to do with our personnel, we've replaced, and we also have. Employees that are maxed out and won't be getting step increases, and so we see with our personnel an actual reduction overall of two point seven two percent. In the past, the commissioners have asked for some contracts that we may have, and how those, uh, budgets may be re. Reimbursed by other entities, so I would just touch real quickly on that. Uh, we do with the weed department contract with the state of Kansas to treat state roads. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, uh, we will reimburse six thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents for that. We also contract with ten other counties in the state for their waste disposal, those counties reimburse administration fees, hourly labor rates, and building space. For twenty twenty-four, they reimbursed us forty-two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents. Riley County also contracts with townships to treat township roads within Riley County. There were seven townships in twenty twenty-four that participated, and they reimbursed us nine thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents. And total twenty-four total collections, including contractual agreements and chemical sales totaled a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So that goes to offset, uh, the budget that I'm requesting, I thought that was important information for the, uh, commissioners and those that be watching, uh, realize that. Um, we also take in money from other entities on this budget as well. So with that, I stand for any questions the commissioners may have on the twenty twenty-six proposed budget for the weed department.
How are we doing, like, with the townships as far as, you know? Or do we have enough, um, vehicles and enough equipment to take care of those and?
Yes.
Future look more?
We do, um, we're prepared, generally, we have between. I, I would say average five, but sometimes we'll have as many as eight to nine townships that will contract with us. Um, our scheduling gets fairly limited there, and we're not really limited necessarily by equipment, we're limited by, uh, weather conditions, wind conditions. And timing before crops begin to raise in the townships, in the townships. Uh, farmers will plant crop right up to the roadway, um, and we're obviously there to do no harm, and so we're very careful. If we have many townships plus spring county roads, we might not get solid spring until we start seeing some crop pop up. And at that point, it's a little too late to be spraying toward on and some other things that could damage the crops. So we're not limited by equipment, we're really limited by time when it comes to that. So we're, we're good, now, if every township would contract with us in one year, uh, that would. We'd be pretty tight to get that taken care of, but that hasn't happened since I've been.
I know there's talk of them doing that, you know, more, but.
In the state, many, many weed departments contract with the state, but many do not, I would say it's probably thirty percent of the state is contracted through the weed department, and the state takes care of their roads, and the other seventy percent. We have contracted with the state here in Riley County since way before my time.
Thank you.
Yeah. Vehicle insurance is one. Sure, everybody's gonna see a jump this year.
Yeah, that's what we've been told, and. At the personal level, like, I know, I mean, we've had so many tragedies in the, in the nation that unfortunately, somebody has to pay for that, and that's trickled down to the consumer.
Yeah, I think that's across the board. I look at everything.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike.
Next, Commissioner, Scott Boost, nine ten.
Yeah, I got in, maybe some peppers.
Nice, you're ahead of me.
I've read some peppers, really, it's too early for, it's very even more sensitive. Well, that's after I planted on the saw that. Usually it's the middle of May, but I had time and. I had planted, I'd gone out and bought some of the stuff. A week ago or something, had a chance. A couple tomatoes, I'm not sure, I think they might not make it, they said that they dried out too much, but. We're looking a little better yesterday, I'm gonna see this morning.
Yeah, I'm hoping.
See if they recovered.
Maybe this weekend.
Asparagus is really going crazy. Missed a couple of days, it's. All.
They grow fast, don't they?
Send my email on Friday with the planning and development budget.
Okay, perfect.
Just wanna make sure.
Oh, is that what, the one in here?
Yeah, it cut off, yeah, so I. So I emailed one to you guys, and then I fixed all future ones to shift over a little bit more.
I'm just got the right one. When it's on there. Morning.
Morning, three of us here.
Yeah, good morning.
Yeah.
Full house.
Uh, my name is Jared Garen, I'm the operations director at Be Able, uh, uh, Scott Vooz, executive director. And Chad Warmstat, uh, new to our staff, uh, as of January first, but he's our, uh, new housing director. And, uh, and, and that's, uh, why, why we came today, uh, just to talk about, uh, a little bit of who, about who Be Able is, just get, just a preface overview, but really digging deeper. To why the supportive housing, uh, program that we're, we're launching, uh, this coming month. At Be Able is, is so important, and, and it's, it's all about, uh, comprehensive recovery sport. So really quickly, like I said, uh, uh, our, our mission and strategy at, at Be Able, first, our mission. Is, uh, we engage with those in adversity by creating connections, cultivating skills, and opening doors of opportunity. Uh, long story short, people come to us in, in the midst of, uh, of, of crisis. Uh, and, and we found time and again, uh, a, a lot of these, uh, processes hinge on these three things, housing, employment. And wellness, and, and wellness encompasses mental health, physical health, addictions, uh, you name it. Uh, when people come to our doors, they come with, uh, having maybe even fallen through the cracks. Of what we see in our, in our, in our community, can you just go ahead and talk a little bit about?
Yeah, um, I think most people know and realize, uh, the, the longstanding, uh, history and, and great support of the other. Uh, social service agencies, the Manhattan Shelter is, is regionally respected, the breadbasket is great at what they do, Shepherd's Crossing, of course, provides those funding. Opportunities, and they're, they're doing things really well, there, there's even more than that. Uh, but yet still, we are seeing more and more people who, for whatever reason, they, they are not feeling, uh, like they're being supported. Maybe they already accessed those entities one time within, within the window of, of their, uh, uh, access opportunity. And so the, the numbers just keep escalating more and more and more, um, and Jared, what he didn't, uh, comment on was the fourth pillar there, the community. So I think that's almost equally as important is, um, individuals are craving a, a community of people. Of, of, of like-mindedness or of, of, um, just connection, and if you can only imagine the individuals that we see. That type of community can be pretty chaotic, and it can be pretty heavy to orchestrate, and I think that that's where our talent comes, comes in play, is, is, uh, creating a safe place and an environment for those people to feel welcome.
Yeah, so our mission, uh, to, to meet people's needs in crisis, our, our strategy, those four pillars, and on top of that is, is our vision. And, uh, this program that we, uh, are, are presenting to you guys today, uh, is hundred percent the, the vision of, uh, meeting our strategy long term. Just to kind of give a little bit of a, of a glance. At the, the reality of, of our community, so, uh, at six percent in, in Riley County, six percent of the households that were polled, uh, through the, uh, Riley County Community Needs Assessment. In twenty twenty, uh, said that they, they dealt with, uh, substance abuse in their household. However, the reality that we see at Be Able is that seventy-five percent of the individuals walking through our door. Are either in the midst of a, uh, an addiction crisis, mental health crisis, uh, or, or they are like, uh, in, in need of help in that, in that way, so the, the people in our community that are hurting. This really ki- kind of casts a, um, uh, kind of a, a spotlight that they're coming to be able, and we're in a position, uh, to meet that need. Uh, daily, walking through our doors, we have seventy-three u- unique individuals on an annual basis, twelve hundred, and. They're, they're not coming in just be, like, actually, I, I would say they're coming in for, for several different reasons. Housing, employment, physical health, community, mental health, clothing, transportation, nour- nourishment. Uh, we don't try that to major in, in all of these, like, for, uh, for nourishment and for fo- for food, there, there are several great, like, uh, breadbasket, they're phenomenal, uh, for, for clothing, and there are other, uh, closets around town. But we try to meet the entire needs, uh, individual needs, can you go ahead and just talk about, uh, why housing is at the top of the list?
Uh, yeah, yeah, um, so. Zooming out a little bit, we, we've been doing what we're doing for, for almost five years now, which we, we've created a day center operation, doing it really well. We're, or, we're attracting the individuals in need for sure, things are going well. Um, but about a year and a half ago, two years ago, it kind of dawned on us that we can do our best efforts to, to make the best plans each day for these individuals, come up with really good targeted, uh, goals for them. Then we shut our doors and we'd go about our way, but then when we'd return the next day, we wouldn't see the individuals. And, and this happens time and time again, so you think about, why is that, where are they going? When we shut our doors at four P M., you know, like, like, um, uh, like, like we do every day, or the common table closes, whatnot. The individuals are going right back to the streets, they're going right back to their, their, their haunts or circumstances. And so we made it a, a goal of ours, uh, to, to really find that, um, housing first opportunity, and we were blessed to, um. To receive three apartment complexes, a few of you probably know exactly where it's at, uh, Catherine, you, you show, or you, you toured it the other day. A half block from our windows, we can see three apartment comp, three units. Totally fourteen bedrooms, so this is our take, and this is, it's gonna be huge to get individuals, we can work with them all day during, during the day. And then they'll be able to go to a safe living environment. And be over, overseen by, by Chad, and he'll talk in a little bit, and, uh, it's truly that housing first mentality where they'll get a, a, they'll have a safe place to go, lay their head at night, feel rested and able to take on the next day.
So just the reality of, uh, of supportive housing, of transitional housing in Riley County, I'm gonna have, uh, Scott again, just kind of speak to, uh. The, the amount of options that there's not, and then maybe in contrast to Saline County.
Sure.
Some, a, a county in, in Kansas, not too far away, but what, what the reality is like there?
So, um, I, the, the transition or supportive housing network in Manhattan, it, it's minimal, very, very, very minimal. There's the emergency shelter, which we know what that is, and, and they do really well, however, they're limited. A- as, as good as, of what they do, they only have a certain amount of space, and then if you add up the other opportunities that are out there. There, there's men's and women's Oxford living, some sober living communities, there, there's two of those, Bonnie Mental Health has done a great job of propping up their version, they have two different, uh, men's. Uh, mental health focus, they also have a, um, a sober living type of environment, and then for the women as well, they have a, a mental health focused house. And then after that, what is there, so we're talking. In a, perhaps five, six transition type of, uh, uh, housing opportunities, compare that to just down the road in Salina. Um, I don't know what they did, but many, many years ago, I, I think what it took was a, a champion of their community who saw this need in Saline and Salina. And has implemented these living structures, there's. There's over twenty, there's twenty-five of these opportunities of transition based housing, uh, where they can take people off the street, uh, in crisis, whatnot, put them in. Safe house with, with guardrails and, and opportunities like that, and so. They, they did it several years ago, and, and they created a great plan, and then they've kind of franchised or, um, just unfolded more and more and more of these opportunities, and so that, that's our hope.
So when we have an individual come into our, our, our program, they'll be, uh, engaged in all parts of Be Able, who we, who we are and what we already do. Uh, recovery groups, we have a couple, narcotics anonymous groups that meet on, uh, site at Be Able, uh, during the week. Something we, we, uh, we major in is the case management, the, the, the day-to-day, uh, navigation, if somebody needs treatment. We're, we're taking all the roadblocks out of the way for them to get it, uh, Riley County Jail reentry, do, do it like, spend like, uh, twenty seconds just talking about how we're in. Uh, that's a jail on, on a weekly basis.
Yeah, every, uh, Wednesday, uh, we spend, there's, uh, two or three of us that spend about two hours, uh, and we just have a list of individuals that we have ongoing relationships with. Uh, that are gonna be released into, into Riley County and mostly the Manhattan area every, these days.
And, uh, so a couple of years ago, we found people, uh, calling us from jail saying, hey, can you visit us next, we, we need a plan to not go back to where we came from, and so that was a, that's our effort. Towards meeting people where they're at, uh, personalized case management, we have case managers on site, available, uh, at. Be Able, people walk in, uh, we don't do appointments because crisis, you, you never know when that's going to hit. Uh, throughout the week, we have life skill workshops, and then sober living housing, and I just wanna dive into that just a little bit, it's, it's launching, like I said, th- this month. It's launching, like I said, this month. Can you just talk a little bit about some of the foundational pieces of sober living housing?
Yeah, so I've been, I was hired on the first this year to develop a plan and develop this program to get ready to come to fruition later this month. And basically, what we want to do is we want to sit down with an individual who is a candidate for this program and just seek out an individual plan for them, just identify hangups and addictions or whatever it is that they are getting put in these situations where they're leading to incarceration, and then hold them accountable to what they sign up for, you know. So it might be a person has to go to three N A meetings a week. So we're going to hold them accountable to that. They're going to have to pass drug tests, you know, to remain in the home. And we really like to have them to commit to six or twelve months to see this happen.
And that is something that I think makes us unique a little bit, and we'll get there. But first, Jacob Clark, he was the clinic supervisor at Riley County Health Department. As we were first digging into this, he had a lot of input towards the direction of this housing program. And he turned us on to the National Alliance for Recovery Residences. And they have standards there. It is a multi-page document of how to do this well and how to do it right. And that's the standard that we've held ourselves to. Chad, you've been a part of their training, and our goal is to be accredited through the N A R standard later this year as well. Chad, can you just go ahead and chat a little bit about our relational approach to meeting people's needs?
Yeah. Well, you know, I think what I'd like to do is just give a real time what is what is happening with an individual right now, so you can see how all these things kind of come together. So our mentoring group went up to the Riley County Jail, and the Riley County Jail hired a gal to run a program to help people get out, and when they get out. So we developed a relationship with her. And there was a, there was a young guy, he's nineteen years old, he was getting out of jail, and she called me, she said, hey, this kid has nowhere to go, nowhere to be. So could you pick him up? I said, okay, I'll pick him up. I had no idea what to do with him. So to show you how all these chains are working in real time, is he came down to Be Able. He had, he didn't, he was hungry, he didn't eat that day, he woke up with the port, wasn't expecting to get out. We were able to call over to the Manhattan Emergency Shelter, got him a bed, which was his desperate need, because otherwise he just would have been living on the streets. And then we were able to get him in there, form a relationship, our program director was able to get him a job within a couple of days. And this gentleman now is, has had a relationship with us. And now, when his time is coming to an end of where he can be at the Manhattan Emergency Shelter, we plan on moving him into the house so we can maintain that relationship with him. You know, and he's really developed these relationships with us in a really positive way. And I can't think of a better example how all of these things are coming into fruition in a really natural grassroots way.
So I wanted to leave about five minutes for questioning. We want to be able to be transparent as possible. Would love to have any questions from the commissioners. Got a lot of nice programs. So a little bit about the properties, there's three properties, nine units. Two of the properties are small apartment complexes and then a single-family home. Right now, the renovation for the first one, five fourteen, I just completed this past week.
Real close.
Yeah. And we're launching here later this month. Five eighteen needs some more sprucing up and to meet code, five twenty-two will be, the renovations will be done here later in July. And our plan, Chad, is to start, not just welcome every single person. So what would go into, what kind of commitment level would somebody need to have in order to be a part of the housing program? Because it's just not anybody, right?
It's not just anybody. So at this point in time, I've got about four individuals that I'm, you know, have had a relationship with, and people from that are around Be Able have had a relationship with. And the requirement that I need from them is a desire to change, you know. Is it that they have a job? No. Is it they're sober right now? Absolutely not. But the requirement is that they have a desire to get there, and they're willing to be held accountable.
So one of the things that we see as a need is that accountability aspect. And can you talk a little bit about the One Step software that we have and that people will have, be able to check in, to record U A tests and stuff like that?
Yeah, so we're learning new software that we purchased through a company called One Step, that is for sober living homes. And it's for just this, it's for accountability. So we can see in real time things that they are going to be accountable to do, whether it's chores in the house, whether it's a positive or negative U A or an A A or N A meeting they need to go to. So these things are real time, when they get there, they check in, it's timed GPS stamped. And it's things that their mentor, their case manager, and myself can all view. And it's just another way to hold them accountable, so they're not just out and able to, you know, blow smoke out, so to say.
So in a community meeting, one of the things I love about Jacob Clark that he said, he's like, you know what, as far as transitional housing is concerned, sober living housing, a program that's all encompassing, like we have a Be Able, he said, it'd be hard pressed to find something that's more economical. And we're coming to you guys today requesting ten thousand. Our entire annual budget for supportive housing, including the salary of our housing director, is a hundred forty thousand. And we would love to have your partnership in this, and we can only see it growing from here. Our goal is to start right, to do well, and then meet the needs going forward, even beyond those three properties. So I want to thank you guys.
Yeah. Well, you know, I've seen you grow from like one building and, you know, the needs in the community, because I worked with Common Table for a long time. A lot of people needed a place to wash their clothes, they needed a place to get clothes, they needed food, they needed, you know, like laundry facilities, and you started out doing all those things. And that really impressed me. And this program, it just seems like it's amazing. I don't know. You know, it's just really helping a lot of people.
Just thank you.
Yeah. Chad described the relationship component of finding one individual recently released from jail. It hasn't been easy. This is a culture and an underbelly of individuals who, they, for the most part, don't want to change. They don't know how to change. And we're breaking through to these individuals. Not everybody, but we're making a pretty darn good dent into these individuals who are on a path that way. They don't need to be going that way. So we're just trying to attract them, capture their hearts in order to get them that way.
Commissioners, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner press conference at nine thirty.
Quick, quick and easy for.
Yeah.
Time you like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uncontested. Yeah, that's the way to do it.
Guess I'll have to get on your radar to get ads and taxes this month.
I'll get the file mine with you guys, too, because mine expires in June, and I'll finally be moving in June. Get that. But I get a new license plate with the new license plate, would I kind of move or not?
We'll just give you a.
Yeah. Sweet. Thanks.
Be a good time to re-register.
Yeah.
You got Scott Mark, everyone wants to start.
Change your Travis nicely back just.
Mark French, Riley County Police Department. Real quick, I'd like to talk about Be Able. I've sat on the board, the police department was asked to represent a board member on that. I was the board member selected five years ago, and I've stayed on that board. Ironically, now I run the jail, and it is a huge asset for the Riley County Jail, just so you know. They do, Be Able always likes to tell about the good stories. The reality is there's more that fall through the cracks than they actually help, but the fact that they put so much effort into helping is unreal. And they do come work with our reintegration coordinator that started very well, and they're in our jail weekly. We target who we know is going back into the community so that we're trying to get some resources quicker. Now, a quick report on the year. Last month, we had an average daily population of a hundred and twenty-six. Just a reminder, anything over one twenty puts us out of our ability to do classification properly as we would like. We are starting off this month a little lower, I think we're around one twenty-one, one twenty and a half, somewhere in there. Which, I don't want you to get that good feeling that we're trending downward in the fact that until we get under a hundred, we're still a very busy operation. Everybody's feeling the cost of food and everything else, no different than what we're feeling right. We do a lot of different things to try to resolve that. I did go tour Saline County and Gary County Jail last week. Saline County, if you have an opportunity, I would beg of you to go tour that facility. It's an eighty-nine million dollar complex, though it's very expensive. But it is an example of a current facility built right. I was very impressed with the thought and how they laid out for expansion. It's a true facility they laid out with the full purpose to be there forever, and the fact that they can expand it very easily. So it was kind of neat to look at. I also toured Gary County, and I don't think there's any need to go model after that right now. I think they have issues that they're working on in their own community as it relates to their jail. Otherwise, everything's going well, our staffing levels are holding, we're doing a hiring process. We should be probably fully staffed by the end of next.
Good morning, Scott High, the Riley County Police Department, and I just wanted to bring attention to a couple of things that are going on. And this first one goes hand in hand with everything that Major French does in the jail, and that's this week, May fourth through the tenth is National Corrections Officer Week. And it goes perfectly hand in hand with the last presentation as well, that the care and the custody of people in Riley County falls on the shoulders of the people in the jail. And this is a local jail, this isn't a prison. And so our goal, and Major French has made a lot of strides to this, is to try to give people the opportunity to be better when they leave our facility. And so this week is in honor of the professional men and women that work in our jail. Next week, May eleventh through the seventeenth is National Police Officers Week. And so the same thing, the professional service that the men and women in the Riley County Police Department give to the community on a daily basis is highlighted. And May fifteenth is National Police Officer Memorial Day, in honor of police officers who have given their life in the line of duty. We are currently hiring for a public information officer. That position is open, and will, the hiring process closes on May eleventh. So anyone out there who knows any P I Os that are looking to help, I looked right at it, just in case. We are hiring for that position. So that's all I've got today. And if the board has any questions of either one of us.
I was, after their presence, I was glad you let us know your view of Be Able. I mean, that was interesting, they were sitting at their table, I was wondering what you're, you know, I wanted, it was interesting to see.
Yeah, it truly is a remarkable program for Manhattan. When I got involved in it, the reason I've stayed involved in it is because Manhattan does a great job, the community, our whole community does a great job of trying to help people. But it lacks a lot of focus a lot of times. People want to give, but they don't know how. Be Able is kind of the center of that wheel that connects all these different agents. And the big shortfalls that I saw right off the bat is why I wanted the laundry and the shower service. Because those were two things that weren't being offered on a regular basis. So it was a program that allowed people to do their laundry once a month or once every two weeks on a very set time period. And there was a church that was allowing people to shower one night a week, but it had to be scheduled. So those were, they're not competing against others. I mean, everybody's competing for slices of the pie. But they really do a good job of not getting, you know, into the food or the given a clothing and all those organizations that are set up. They're really about the care, the mental health, the substance abuse. You know, the jail, we always, we work on, we're trying to follow them upon release, you know, to see how successful we're being. So I now get feedback and with some of our inmates, especially the ones with mental health, like how we're going to reach around services to allow them to stay on their meds, stuff like that. Be Able is phenomenal for that. They really are. So it does, it does fit the community. There are negatives, too. I'm not going to die. You know, does it attract, you know, fields of dreams, build that they will come? There are some issues with that, you know, if you're the best at what you do in the area, you know, people are going to come to that. So there is some downside to that. But I will tell you, Be Able does bypass things, too, and a lot of people don't realize that. They're not about, you know, we need to relocate people, they can do that as well.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, gentlemen. Be safe out there.
Good morning, Commissioners, Shiloh Hager, Riley County Treasurer, with everybody's favorite time of year. Here to just remind the public that the twenty twenty-four second half taxes are due a week from today. The tenth actually falls on Saturday, so then the taxes become due the next business day, which happens to be Monday, May twelfth. Tax payments must be postmarked by this date if you're going to be dropping them in the mail. So knowing the post office, I would probably start that this week. Interest will start accruing on Tuesday, May thirteenth. Just a reminder, any delinquent personal property taxes, intangible watercraft, sixteen twenty trucks or oil and gas taxes that are delinquent after May twelfth, you will not be able to perform any motor vehicle transactions until those are taken care of. We do offer several ways to pay. You can pay in person at one ten Courthouse Plaza, Monday through Thursday, seven thirty A M. to five P M. And on Friday, seven thirty A M. to noon. We do currently have a drop box sitting in the lobbies, so you can just swing by and drop it in the drop box if you would like. If it's after hours, we also have a drop box that's located on the front of the building, so you can use that as well. I highly encourage customers to use our online service. It is a dollar fifty if you are paying by an e-check or two and a half percent of your charge if you are using a debit or a credit card with a minimum of two dollars and ninety-five cents is the minimum charge for that. You can also pay by telephone at seven eight five, three seven seven, five three eight five. And once again, those convenience fees are added if you do that. If you have any questions or you need any tax information, please feel free to call our office at seven eight five, five three seven, six three two one, and we'll be happy to give you a hand.
I heard a good compliment.
Oh, good.
I was someplace just talking to the cashier behind there, and they were talking about how they procrastinated in April to get whole families tags. Obviously, we do it at the same time, and they got the wrong registration, tagged to the wrong tag, and had to come back in, and they felt bad about it, and they were stressed out about it. They said, nobody in the office was. I thought that was impressive.
Well, thank you.
Pass that along.
We try not to. All right, well, have a great day.
Shiloh, we don't hear enough of that, just reminds me and Menards this weekend, I heard a compliment on the county overall and your office in particular as well. And the person that works at the local company that does a lot of business.
Oh, thank you.
Heard those enough.
Well, thank you. We try really hard to make it as pleasant of an experience as we can.
They worked with, but then I didn't get a good enough description on it.
Not a problem. I'm just glad it's the whole office. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, Mr. Hanson, and it's time.
All right.
All right.
We slid into the collective session.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
Is that a session now or?
Well, we can, we can flip back if we want, but I just know in public comment, we already swapped.
You should just keep it.
So.
Well, it's a ten-twenty or?
So I'll just, yeah.
Sorry, I guess we didn't tell you.
That's okay. I thought I was listening, but I must have been walking back. I heard.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners, Deputy County Counselor Jacob Hanson here. As far as administrative work session goes, there's really one topic I wanted to bring up to you guys, and it's one I've been bringing up for quite a while, which is our fence views. And specifically the Halsman's, uh, the Halsman. Combine it in both and the one. Hargrave Salzman. Here we go. On the Hargrave Salzman fence view, I've got a commission agenda report basically typed out, ready to go for you guys to consider. It is a little lengthy. Uh, it's a little lengthy and there's a lot to consider here as you guys are kind of the fact finders of this situation, whether or not a certain statutory exemption applies or whether it does not. So my goal in bringing this up to you guys is that I can schedule, I can submit this car for this Thursday and you guys can we can do it this Thursday. But if you guys would like some additional time to review all the documents, which I would maybe encourage, we can set it for, I can still submit the car and then we can set it for a later date, whatever works for you guys.
Sounds like it might take some time to, yeah.
What do you, uh, how, how much time? Cause I'll get you the materials, uh, either at, at the end of the day today or beginning tomorrow. You'll have the materials and everything in front of you. So you guys let me know what, what day would you guys like to have it on? Cause I know we're pretty packed.
I would say maybe towards the end of the month, maybe let us get through budget. Okay.
Well, he was talking about putting in his admin time.
Oh, gotcha.
Not if you're not, you're just putting in your admin time. It's already.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can do that. Yeah.
We can, we can look at it Thursday and if we're you don't have to make a decision Thursday.
That sounds good. Then that's what I'll do.
He gives us some stuff and we can come up with our first, first round of questions on it.
Sounds good.
And we do have to have a public hearing and stuff on it though.
No, we don't know. Uh, I know we've kind of done that in, in past practices, but public hearings are usually, we allow that for both sides to better present their arguments, but usually it's because it's been a long time between when we do the fence view.
Oh, gotcha.
And then when we make the decision, this one, we're pretty still close in time to that. So I don't think that's appropriate, but if you guys would like, we can certainly do that as well.
Like I said, if you get it to us, we have a chance to review it. We have questions Thursday, then we'll make the final decision then, but.
Fair enough. Yeah, sound good. Okay. Well, then I will get that submitted to Syndicate ASAP and we'll have that to look forward to on Thursday. Um, as far as anything else going on in the office, I did have a couple of court cases this morning. One ended up being moved and this is of course regarding the nuisance statement cases. Uh, and then we had another individual, Mcnee. Uh, this was just a, on a motion to file an amended complaint where essentially we're asking the court to let us amend the complaint so that it just better sets out the understanding of the legal process that we're going through and some of the factual information, just for everybody's benefit because this is kind of a newer process. Um, and so we got a direction from the court to go ahead and file that amended complaint and we're moving on from there. Mcnee is one I know that he's been making substantial efforts and cleaning up the property. So I'm hoping, and I think we're all hoping that going to trial or anything of that matter is, is likely not necessary. So there's that update. I'm not, uh, I can't think of anything else off the top of my mind. That you guys would like to hear, but I haven't been to stand for any questions if you have any.
I'm good for now.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Big appreciate it. Thanks, Commissioner, and Mr. Stukie.
It is an appropriate, as an appropriation, it is an appropriation. There are other appropriations, just like our C P D, it's appropriation, especially. That's all that.
You guys want all that information? You can send it to me electronic.
So this is a court.
Say again?
I'll print it out if I need.
You know, that's the full amount they're getting, but like.
But some of the money comes from.
Chamber of Commerce, their entire amount comes from.
What is it under?
The what is what under?
Chamber of Commerce. I don't see it listed.
Under Economic Development Fund. Is, is it on there?
It's not. So the brochure just is an overview of general fund. And so it'd be in our budget book.
That's why. So all of those are out of general, but that is all of the appropriations. And we can get you that as well with that fund too.
Thank you.
Do you want me to email you that?
Maybe I'll let you know. We're not enough room on this to listen to the public knowledge.
Yeah, not on this one, because this one's just general. So this is just an overview of like your general fund revenues, expenditures and just overall level. Yes.
And what you gotta understand is the commissioner, when we, when we first developed this decades ago, only just a quick snapshot and not too much information where most people, unlike you, most people just want to snapshot pretty little things quickly. The overall budget is the only thing that has everything. There's no way on something to go proud of that. It's already that we can put everything on there. That's not to be a picture of our budget by any means.
Take a reading, Gary. Did it, young man?
Yeah.
How was the weekend for him?
Not too bad.
We took the Wichita, where your daughter's from.
Your daughter is?
Congrats.
No, congrats. What was her major?
Electrical engineer.
Nice. Job lined up? Oh, wow. There you go.
She's interned there the last three years.
I say that's where, oh, yeah, your family's kind of based around that area.
Yeah.
Okay, nice. I've stopped at that Sonic in town many a time.
Uh huh. Doing it again in December because she's taking extra classes now. So we have her masters.
He's been busy.
Yeah.
You got your administrative assistant position filled?
If you signed that paper this morning, I did. Yes. Scheduled to start on the nineteenth. And the following week I leave for a week of vacation.
Find that out well.
Lori and Michelle can train her rights and then I'll come back.
That sounds about right.
We hated to lose Michelle, but at least she's, you know, just still here. So she can still help. She went to the health department.
Oh, she did?
She took the FEP coordinator position.
Oh, wow. Okay. I didn't know. Oh.
Yep.
That's rough.
For a couple of weeks, you didn't notice?
I see her. No, I seen her at Chipotle. I ran into her at Chipotle. That's what I'm probably making up. Yeah.
Yeah, she's still.
Oh, speaking of, I ran into Alana Parker from the Health Department, our Health Department, Museum. She's got daughter number two now. You know. And going back to that weather webinar from last Monday, I was pretty impressed how accurate their forecast actually was.
Yeah, they're, you know, they, it started, started a little further west than what they really thought, but, but I thought it was, yeah. Relatively accurate.
I like this. It's pretty cool. Old Aaron, thirty-eight years, huh?
Yep.
You're your old firefighter that who's at home and doing better.
Yeah.
He's had a long haul.
You mean Darren?
Yeah.
You talking about Darren Hoffman?
No, um, down by Aaron and me. Got a little sick with the flu or something. Was in the hospital for air. Not one, but not a blank on his name. Down below Water Crossing, lives right there. My wife just talked about him last night. You're on a blank on his name. But yeah, he was in the hospital.
Somebody that's still on the department or?
No, he had just withdrawn not too long ago, just before that happened.
Oh, oh, um. Yeah.
Nobody can remember anybody's name. I don't think he exists.
I'll never forget what's his name.
Yeah. Where that one time.
Drive by his place only two times a day at a minimum.
Yeah, I'll think of it about ten, ten minutes after I walk out of here.
And he's still at home to govern. He is.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, the mentioned earlier, John, that eighteen eighty that's also a three generation firefighter.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah, Andy and, and his dad Raymond are, are both on. So Raymond was the, the station chief and now Andy is the station chief and their dad, or Raymond's dad, Andy's grandpa was one of the founders of the fire district.
I like hearing that.
Yep. Nineteen sixty. So they signed the paperwork, I think, the end of sixty-five in the fire district. Started January one.
That'd be something kind of cool to put up their tarts at the top of your head or down there below or something.
Yeah.
You know, establish.
Yeah.
That's an idea.
I think six. So it depends on, you know, what, like the paperwork was signed at the end of sixty-five to establish it January one of sixty-six, I think. Is the right dates.
What means you'd be celebrating sixty years this next year. That's pretty significant.
Yes. And I will.
Yep. Yeah, well. Need to do something. I'm not sure what, but something.
Morning, there's Russell Suki with Emergency Management, Kany Fire nine-one-one. Uh, my monthly staff update for you. Uh, some of the highlights are, uh, obviously we had some severe weather and as we were talking about before, the weather service did a pretty accurate job. I think of
as we were talking about before, the weather service did a pretty accurate job, I think, of predicting that last one.
Might have been able to tell us that it was gonna hail straight for twenty minutes, but outside of that.
We're saying golf balls.
Uh, smaller, smaller diameter but larger quantity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then had a few other events where we opened the EOC to monitor the weather. We've, uh, been working with the architect committee, as you know, with from the report the other day, trying to get the plans finalized so they can give them the remodel. Plans drawn and prepared to bid. We're, uh, working with John Ellerman and Cory to facilitate our temporary move out to the Conza space. So that's, I, uh, was working last week. Pat threw away a lot of stuff when I took the job, but I found a lot more stuff to throw away that we don't need anymore old files and especially don't need to move them twice, so. So I kind of had a desk full of about this much of stuff of old files that went to the shredder. As you know, we conduct our monthly outdoor warning siren tests and, uh, we'd been having trouble with a couple of sirens and our vendor, which is Blue Valley Public Safety, uh, who comes out of the Kansas City area, they've, they used to let KCOM, local vendor, do some work on those. And they've kind of changed their practices now to where they're basically trying to cut KCOM out of it, saying, oh no, they're not approved. Service provider, we need to do the work, which means we have to pay them a lot of mileage. And so we've started getting some bigger bills than we're used to. And so this, just for information, but, um, you know, those are, we haven't budgeted that much, you know, for that kind of repairs and so, I mean, it's a possibility come the end of the year that if we have a lot of siren issues, if we don't have any siren, too many siren issues, it won't be a big deal, but if it gets to where, um, we do have to call them several times in that scenario, we could potentially go over budget, just, you know, no, uh, kind of out of our control basically, but we are going to investigate and see, you know, what other options there are for group service providers for that equipment. You know, see if there's somebody that either is closer to my knowledge, I mean, I've been dealing with this in my previous job and there aren't a lot of providers for that stuff is the problem, so it's kind of like the generators on the radio towers. You know, they're Generac generators, well, the Generac service provider has to come out of Kansas City again, so the last time we had an issue with one of those, I think it was a fifty-seven or a ninety-seven dollar part. It cost us three thousand dollars to get replaced because it took two trips. Nope, it took two trips and we complained, I complained and griped and they took one trip off. And so, you know, that saved a thousand dollars off that three thousand dollar bill, but I mean, what do you, you know, travel time and, you know, I think there was two hour, two hours of labor and two trips. Well, the majority of the cost was the mileage and the, the paying the technician to drive here two hours to do one hour of work. I mean, I don't know. You know, what do you do? Our, you know, our shop services them and does what they can, but once it gets to a point, they, there's only so much they can do on that special, more specialty, but so just, just kind of FYI.
But when you said the Blue Valley, you know, doing the maintenance, I'm like, well, it was always KCOM, but I guess.
And, and then, you know, because there's, there's, there's two. Yeah, there's two components to the sirens, there's a radio in the sirens. And a lot of times when there's an issue, it's a communication issue. The siren doesn't really malfunction that much. And so KCOM has always worked on the radios. And then maybe even then a little more because it's, you know, electronics, but yeah, they're tightening down on some of that to where, and they're getting new program, you know, the new equip, and this has new software that they don't give to KCOM and so they can't get into them farther, you know, and do some of that stuff, so. Just, just kind of FYI on that. We're working, we're in the process of doing, uh, our hazardous, hazardous commodity flow study, which monitors hazard materials that come through the area. It's something that you're supposed to do once every five years, we get a grant for it from, through KDM, uh, through past truth from the feds and we're in that process now. Um, part of it is a, there is a match, but you can do it in kind, so part of it is some, our staff, Lori's done the most of it from our staff, to go out and set at certain intersections and count the trucks that come by and note the hazardous material placard that's on that truck. And then the, the company that we hired to, uh, combine all that from, and let me back, it's a multi-county thing, where the lead county and all our neighboring counties are participating. And so they're going out and monitoring a pre-identified intersection. But one thing, um, we're, we're, we need to be spending a little more time, so I will probably go out because it's based on your pay and so the, 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 uh, higher paid people, you can get out there and go sit, the faster you meet that match. So I will, you might see me sitting at an intersection for two or three hours at a time, you know, just sitting there in my vehicle, well, that's what I'm doing, I'm, I'm documenting hazardous materials. I think Doug was going out today to do some, Lori's went out and done a lot. And so I probably need to do my share of it, but I was, I'm gonna call, uh, Chief French from the city and see if he wants to go with me and so we can double up, you know, and.
A few people sitting at once?
Well, but, but we, they don't give us some time to talk about some other things. But instead of doing it in a conference room, we'll do it in a parking lot. I don't know if he'll take me up on it, but we'll see. Uh, Robert Cox, our planner, he's been going strong, uh, our, our new old planner. And re-establishing, uh, uh, relationships and meeting the new people that are new here since he left and now, has now came back. I've got some real good reports from other departments that they've had good interaction, not that I anticipated anything last, but that's been good. Um, as you're aware, we're, Legal and I have been talking about Senate Bill one ninety-nine and I think on the twelfth, we're on the agenda to come back and talk to you about that some more, on what updates you want to make to our fireworks resolution. And so, Kenny, I think you know, kind of know that, so be prepared to answer a few questions as far as if you want to match the state states, if you want to, what you want to do, so, but we'll have more detail on that on the twelfth. And as you mentioned, we've, um, completed our hiring process for that administrative assistant and that position should start on the nineteenth, we're excited about that. Uh, we had a biggest incident we had in that in the past month is the Harmony Road Fire, which we reported to you on pretty extensively, so I won't go into details. And, uh, somewhat related to that, I, I'm on the fire service working group for the state, since I'm the chair of the Northeastalman Security Council, the chairs are on that. Well, all the chairs, each council gets to appoint somebody to serve on the fire service working group, so I appointed myself because I have great interest in that. Especially, uh, an agenda item that they asked for agenda items and so in the last working group, we had an extensive discussion about, uh, state and federal properties and how they're managed and, and how, what mitigation prac, practices are in place or not in place, but maybe should be as far as fire breaks and road access and some of those things, and so that's a topic that I'm gonna push on a little harder and see what there is maybe we can do to improve some of those situations, and when I brought it up, a lot of the other, um, members like, oh yeah, that's a problem in our area too, in our lake or our wildlife area or whatever. Not as big a problem as you have probably, but it's a problem for us too, so. There was, uh, there was interest in that, it wasn't just kind of one-sided from me, so that was good. Uh, Station one-ten up at University Park, it's, uh, we're getting really close, we're still waiting on Evergy to actually get power to it. And, uh, last week, we had a crew of our people, we went to Menards and got some lumber, got the bathroom trinket in, and so doing that ourselves, that part ourselves and, uh, it's getting really close and so I don't know if I'm quite ready to try and get on your calendars to schedule a ribbon cutting, but that'll be coming, I assume you still want to do that. Ribbon cutting up there, so. Uh, work, public works is helping us, they're gonna be hauling in a little bit of dirt and to get a little slopes right and everything, get everything set toward uh, lay the gravel for a parking lot, so that's been a good cooperation on public works part, we're still waiting on the water line, they, for all the engineers, to get done what they gotta get done so that the plumbers can actually put pipe in the ground. Uh, other big thing we're working on is getting our new fire reporting software, uh, uh, all set up properly, we've got a few members that are beta testing it now, so they're getting run, filling out dual run reports on the old system and the new system, so we're keeping the old system, you know, as the official system until we feel like we have all the bugs worked out of the new one. Uh, staff has been meeting with the Rock Plains Planning Committee for the concert that's getting planned or a total kind of a new, uh, stampede, if you will.
Stampede two point oh.
Yeah, so there's still a lot of questions about it, so.
I'm sure they don't even have the permitting yet.
Not all of it, to my understanding, some, they have the wildlife and parks and Corps of Engineers permitting, but I don't think they have a pot, you know, to permit that. So yes.
Okay.
But, uh, then we had a firefighter up at Leonardville Station one oh six, he had a pretty major medical thing and we had a biscuit and gravy feed up there last Saturday and, and, uh, between people that came and ate biscuits and gravy and then others just donated, we collected over seven thousand dollars. And more, more money supposedly coming in, so that could easily grow to eight or thousands or more, did that through the firefighter association. We can see, uh, have the normal run reports and our, uh, newsletter, do you have any questions on any of that stuff?
He's not related to the gentleman that passed up in Kansas City, is he?
Not that I know of, but.
Have same last name, so I was just wondering, okay.
Yeah, I haven't been told if there's any connection with it. Any questions on that? If not, then the, the next item I have is on a, uh, potential for some grant funding that could help with the, uh, storm shelter at the remodel, it's a notice of intent, you, we have to fill out the notice of intent first. And then when I, I talked to her on, she's, she said, right now, today, there isn't any money there, but that money could show up at any time, it's based on past, um, disasters and then that mitigation money is a percentage of what disaster money there is, has been issued available for past disasters and even if you haven't had a disaster in your county, if you're contingent to other counties that have a disaster, it's a whole deal, like to start the ball rolling, we have to fill out the notice of intent first and so if, uh, commission is agreeable to that, then we will fill it out and see what happens.
What is the, what is the total cost of that storm?
It's between, what was the last thing they put? One twenty to one eighty?
Much money for a storm.
It started out way higher than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
To do what, to do what would truly be the best to have the EOC, the actual, where you're looking at half million plus. To, to make the whole EOC, not the whole building, but the whole EOC, the storm shelter, that would be five, six hundred thousand. And so obviously we weren't gonna do that, so we've trimmed and looked and looked and trimmed and settled on, uh, what we showed you the other day with one right off the back of the building, this is probably the best.
New, they just revised the, the requirements for storm shelters in the last year or two.
Yeah.
That made it a lot.
Or strength.
Required a lot more.
Yeah.
Because they have to reinforce, there's, you get it official to get it certified, you have to have it reinforced like crazy.
Well, the, the other thing that they're having issues with is doing the doors properly, they're finding that even in the underground ones that, in a, in a major, you know, EF three type tornado or larger, the doors are coming apart on them. Um, you know, door kind of defeats the purpose, yeah.
Um, but is this just for the employees or is this in case the EOC people will go, go in there too or what?
It, it would not be big enough to hold everybody that could potentially be in the building, you know, it'd be for what a normal staffing of the EOC would be for a storm. You know, so when we open it, so during the storm, you know, there, you know, a, a big groups probably eight to ten would be a big group that comes in to monitor a storm. It's normally more like five or six, and so it'd be big enough for that amount of people. If there was a, a meeting going on or something, um, and we saw the storm was coming, they would have to go across the street over to like the new EMS building to get into a bigger shelter. Uh, and then just the essential staff would stay there monitoring the storm, ready to activate the sirens and do different things that we need to do until the last minute and then they could duck into this shelter at the last, last minute, but keep working right up until the storm actually hits where the other people, you know, have to have some awareness and soon as the.
They have time to get across.
Yeah. And, you know, in reality, that is a concrete building, it's got a concrete roof. You know, that building itself is probably the safest building to be in, in the neighborhood for sure than any other building around there other than the new EMS building that has a rated storm shelter incorporated, you know, from the, from new.
I guess built into the side of the.
Mm-hmm. Right. Rich has a question.
Do you have any idea of, uh, how much funding is available potentially for a project or match or anything like?
On this, on this, none today. It just.
I know, but they generally, you know, say if there is funding, here's what they've typically done in the past type of thing.
No, because it's based off of how much mitigate, how much thing is awarded for disaster in recent, and so it could be from a disaster for two, three, four years ago. And then they'll take a percentage of it, so if that disaster was a million dollar disaster or a five million dollar disaster, then they'll, they may, you know, to say, okay, two percent of this is for mitigation projects and this would be mitigation projects, so I mean, it's just all over the place.
Creatively trying to think of how we could get the five hundred thousand dollar option to fund the whole.
And, and so it's, and then it'll be a tight window because once construction starts, then it's gotta be pre-construction, so.
Is the equipment covered? Uh, is the equipment in there that, would that be covered under our insurance?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Would it be gone probably?
So if, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a shot in the dark, but it's worth taking a shot.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I really think like Russell said, that facility has its pretty stout, you know, and so.
Yeah, in rea, in reality, if, if there's actually a tornado coming, are me or my staff gonna leave the, leave the desk and, and go into that storm shelter? Probably not, but we, if we probably aren't being responsible by not putting something in or, you know, if we preached to everybody else put in a storm shelter and we're doing a major reservation, renovation, probably not leading by example if we don't put something. But I don't know that we need to put the half million dollar version. And those estimates, you know, BHS said, they, they want to make sure they are not under, so.
Yeah.
I'm pretty confident and Greg can correct me if, if he disagree or agree, but think it'll be less than that when the actual bids come in, but they said they're shooting.
Like I said, the EOC, the EOC is, they put a full usually is after.
Right.
Disasters.
Yeah, after the storm's already passed, you know, is when it's full.
When it gets filled, but before, you've got, like I say, a smaller crew there just watch, keep an eye on.
Yeah, pre-storm.
You know, really big tornadoes coming, you'd be amazed at how many people could fit in that twelve per storm.
Like I said, if it's a big storm, we're all friends.
Hell, let's see, well, I'd make a motion to approve that the staff complete the, um,
Notice of.
Notice, notice of intent for the potential storm shelter grant funding for the EM, emergency management fire remodel project.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the staff completes the notice of intent, potentially storm shelter grant funding for the EM fire remodel project, on, on favor.
Hi.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thanks.
Thank you, Russell. Thanks, Commissioner, it's time for Jake goes. You didn't have anything else, did you?
You didn't have anything else, did you? Just the, that's a question?
Yeah, just a question.
I go ahead and move the county commission, uh, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Sheriff Bokey and Commissioner Ford. Recess into executive session on potential litigation for the con- purpose of consultation with Jacob Hanson. Deputy County Counselor, Attorney for the Commission and Rich Vargo, County Clerk. And Anna Burson County Appraiser, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting to, um, continue in the commission chamber at ten, no, excuse me, eleven A M.
Eleven?
Ten forty.
Ten forty.
Ten forty.
Oh, ten forty.
Yeah.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session for reasons previously stated. And the attorney-client relationship, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yep, we're good. Thank you.
Now you can't.
Um, I would make a motion to the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session.
My second.
And moving in second, the Board of Commissioners come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye. And I would make also make a motion that record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
Second.
And moving in second, the record reflect action should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Anna.
Next to commissioners, we have Daniel. Daniel, how you doing?
Good, good.
Thank you.
You're all right. Get started.
All right. Well, good morning. This morning, we're presenting our two preliminary budget requests for 2026. First one's on behalf of the Fair Board. I met with the Fair Board Budget Committee and talked to them about what they'd like to do for the next year and what they're thinking. The Fair Board has requested a 1% increase of about $1,500 for next year. Three items are looking to add money to their line item are as security services. I really want to make sure we stay competitive and make sure we can hire security for fair. Admittedly, hasn't haven't had security last couple of years, but that's one point of emphasis we want to have to be able to find someone to hire and make sure it's someone that has some jurisdiction, hopefully. Fair judges added $250 for that line items request. Just to address the rising costs we're paying for mileage, they don't they don't get paid a whole lot, $12, $13 an hour, but the big thing is mileage and covering their travel. And then the last line item is $1,000. The Fair Board has asked to for to cover supplies and materials. That is just for the year round because things that help make the fairgrounds operate. The one thing in talking to the Fair Board is we did request that the fair budget be changed to the quote fairgrounds budget. Just reflection for the public that this budget really takes care of the fairgrounds year round by custodial supplies, other supplies to help the groups operating year round and not just at fair time. So a lot of money does go to the fair, but you know, like for instance, this week we're got a call about $1,000 pump needing for the dishwashing machine. So the budget helps to keep the fairgrounds running in general. Any questions I can answer or problems?
So county doesn't pay for improvements out there? I mean, I know we've we have maintenance staff out there all year, so the whole thing, right? But any repairs that fair play fairground, any repairs? Like you said, to the
We we pay for stuff out there as well.
From what I understand, I think it's kind of a combination where if John Harkness employee out there needs to buy something to improve the fairgrounds, they'll draw a credit card to the the fair credit card.
Oh.
And so that will come out of this budget. So when he's fixing things around there, the kind of small items around from what I understand.
Big items for the county though.
But then the so again, this budget would also be like the year round custodial supplies and toilet paper cleaner, things like that would come out of this budget for the groups that use it the rest of the year as well.
And if you look at it indirectly through the county, all of its faith.
One or another, right?
Yeah, one or the other.
You have a, and you may have said it, the contract services that went up from the 24 budget. What is that due to?
Oh, let me find that there. That would be, I'd be lying if I could list them off the top of my head, but that's various people that help out during the fair time with excess cleaning, trash services, just the higher demand than the staff that work out they're able to do. I think there's some like, I think it's a line club. It's like $1,000 to work the parking type of thing, extra custodial services, extra trash services, that type of thing during the week of fair itself.
Okay.
There's anything, not anything else. Also have our Riley County Extension Council budget this morning. Well, the next one is our pre- pre-submitting for the Riley County Extension Council budget request. For 26, we are submitting for appropriations, the same request we've had the last couple of years to be able to stay fly and operate with what we've had. As you know, I think we've brought up during the previous meetings, we are going to have a full staff as of June 8. So with Lynn Lynn's retirement, we have our administrative assistant, Sherry Rogers, has been with us about a month. And our new Ag and Natural Resources, Lindsay Shorter, will be starting on June 8. So starting June 8, we'll be fully equipped moving forward and be able to continue operating. On our back, I don't know if it's, just as a side note, our appropriations requested the same, our overall budget as listed is smaller than years past, just due to less unencumbered funds that we are putting in from our reserve. So we're looking to operate more closely at appropriations as our reserves are to a point where we're looking to to keep them for different emergencies or emergency purchases on our end. So if this overall number is smaller for the total budget, that is why is due to less unencumbered cash balance that we are are putting towards the total budget. But like I said, the big, the big thing is looking to just ask to stay flat for the next year.
Probably save some money with staff turnover, didn't you?
Yes, no, we we do. It puts us back a few years on with staff turnover, but also we've been blessed where we have people stay around quite a while. And so the the median staff level has risen for salaries. So we have saved some money with some retirements and moving on, but also it's, I'd say it put us back three or four years on on staff levels, but the median salary has risen just with retention rates, which I'll ha- I'll happily take. We're blessed to have people staying around in our office, which many extension agent, extension counties or districts have had issue with.
You said you hadn't received any notice from Kansas State on what they were gonna, you know?
We haven't, we haven't officially received, but we've been told that it is expected to stay flat or slight increase. But I haven't officially got word back about what that amount will be.
Because it's a small amount compared to what you put in.
Correct, yeah, they do. They, it is overall small amount compared to the counties that State University puts in for salaries.
They're paying for salaries.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, so word on the street is won't, it won't go down, but there's a chance it'll go up. I think I heard maybe 2% or so, but still waiting on the what the official word from legislators.
This one has to be approved over here.
Yeah.
Good, go ahead.
Oh, so Brittany knows this better than I do, but there's some official laws and such that have submitted. So when we officially submit this, it's a 10 day window for officially approved, disapproved and get sent back to our board. So I was going to work with Brittany or Brittany is going to help me know when to officially submit it. So this is kind of our, our, yeah, this is our preapproval sent in, just for you all to know that we're looking to stay flat for for you see what's happening.
I remember there was some kind of deadline.
You know, we want to have extra fun with budget season, so we'd like to throw this wild card in.
You're gonna have a Kool-Aid stand at the fair this year, right?
Well, actually, I'm glad, I'm, you know, I'm glad you brought that up. That's actually the baking contest this year. Megan was inspired by my failure to bake Kool-Aid earlier this year, so she decided. My, my failure or the baking?
What's the baking contest?
Kool-Aid cheese.
That's what I'm judging.
Oh, no cookies?
Anything else I can answer about our budget in general or questions I can do for you?
Thanks, Daniel.
All right. Thank you all for your support.
How's Amanda?
Maybe I, if I do the cookies, I wouldn't eat so many during the year.
What are those? I don't even know what those are.
Colachians.
It's a checklist of what you deserve. It's like a dough with a pretty filling, usually apricot, cherry, you're pretty typical, prune. My favorite is they are.
Okay, all right.
And you see where I go from in Kannapolis, we're just like 25 miles away. So they had the annual check festival. My whole life, yeah.
We did too, because we had a lot of checks.
That'll be funny. They don't have no frosting or anything on them and the dough is just a pretty plain dough. It's the filling that really gives it the flavor.
Be on a sugar rush for, for a month.
They're not, they're not worldly, they're not sweet like a cinnamon.
Of course, Germans put a lot of sugar in them. Yeah, we have a lot of those.
So on the 19th, we're not planning anything past a regular meeting?
No, you'll just have a couple and actually only one in the morning.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, okay. So I can reschedule my meeting from last Thursday on that day. Okay. New York, you can raise it because now regular dates are two o'clock. Yeah. Only for three meetings, it looks like, but. So 1880, I wanted to go do that, but busy.
It's being signed over there, but didn't really know, understand what it was.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was a little confusing. Sure, don't mind if I do. So much better than like the Jack's.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Right? Yeah. You want for a while, just get it softened up. Any else?
And you got? Do they sell fresh beef in there? Cups of beef in there?
Yeah, I know.
This is similar to what is that Booth Creek, I think, I guess, right there? I think Son is good.
I'm going to get killed in Kansas City. My daughter works in hospital. She's developing, gee, this knee or she's newly brought in people. That's such a tragic deal.
By the way, I do have another case at 12:50. So, or at 1, I'm gonna head over there at 12:50. So I'll be doing that. Hopefully also another. I know. Well, Darrell, trust me, I'll, I'm rushing right back as soon as I'm.
You don't want to be with us very much.
I have to run home at lunchtime and grab some to block the dog because my dog walker is not.
Want to try some jerky?
No, thank you. I'm not a jerky eater.
Not salty like that stuff, you know?
I may try some later.
I'm going to teriyaki's a little salty, just like in true.
That's teriyaki.
The coins, if we need something for budget, it's here.
Big island, we're in the black.
10 cents, so.
Might bring yours down quite considerably. We can't know on the bottom.
Better pick it up.
Something we can use of this line.
Yeah, I was just, when you mentioned that, I was just looking at that thinking, I'm, I'm hoping our new system doesn't do that.
It doesn't.
We, the new system will be going to here shortly.
Oh, good, because it's.
I was just thinking about that, though, just before you said that.
Oh, that line that cuts off on the budget.
Always been an issue with minute track.
Oh, yeah, gotta squeeze it in there sometimes, dude.
Yeah, and I went on all our board, like our next ones, I went through and like readjusted the margins, so in theory it won't, but when I generate like a mini packet to like look at it, it doesn't show the line, so I'm really guessing.
All those columns don't need to be that big, I guess.
Yeah, you get the total down at the end is what dictates that.
Yeah. Pretty question.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners, Amanda Webb, Planning Director, here with Planning and Development's twenty twenty six budget request. Um, as you can see, mine's pretty straightforward this year. Um, I am actually not requesting any new positions. Um, still want to express my gratitude for you all approving my, uh, full-time administrative assistant for this year's budget. That's been working out really well, so appreciate that. So we're, we're doing okay in planning and development with, with our people, so no, um, extra quest, request there. Um, also, of course, we're working through our comprehensive plan update, which you, um, dedicated twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. I have economic development funds to that, so we'll be done with that in twenty six, so don't need to worry about that. So really, the only thing we're looking at here, the only change that, um, I need to account for, because it's part of our, um, contract for our permitting software, is that five percent annual technology fee increase. That was again, part of their original contract that we did a few years back. So that's, um, the only thing I have here, programming services, GovBuild's, um, contract will be the one thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollar increase from twenty twenty five budget to twenty twenty six. And so since that's the only thing I'm doing, my, um, three Cs, if you will, it's only just a little bit over a two percent increase for planning and developments budget, just with that one item. Everything else I'm keeping flat, um, just looking over the last few years of what we spent in some of the different categories. We should be, should be fine keeping things, keeping things flat there, so. This point, there's nothing I'm anticipating, knocking on some wood here, so this should be. Should be it's. Any questions or anything else?
Personnel, you had it as needed, very equal before.
Right.
Is that now the other one's full time, you don't need that?
Yeah, I mean, the position is, it still exists, of course, but we don't, we, we kind of traded for, if I have the full-time administrative assistant, that we don't, we won't fill it as needed at this point, so. We just have the six of us.
Well, this accounts for the, uh, cost of living increase, your salaries.
Um, so again, this is, yeah, this is just my three Cs, not anything with personnel.
One line, bottom.
Yeah, all personnel are step only. So, um, on all these budgets from departments, it's step only, and then we'll present the cost of cola.
I believe it's two point seven.
Yes, two point seven is what we're projecting.
Standard CPI current.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, yeah, happy to do that, so. Any other questions?
Don't think so.
Alright, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amanda, appreciate it. Where's she at? Venus Snyder at eleven twenty.
Yeah, we can't prefer it here.
Good, would like to give you a little.
Want to go early?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm here, let's do it.
See anybody here, it's gonna complain, so.
Take a look around for a read.
Before we get officially started. I would love to ask a question unrelated.
Okay.
Since I have a few little extra minutes, we had talked, or you had mentioned. Uh, coming up with a. An easier way to request the city, the county plaza. And I would love to work on that at some point. We, we have some opportunities for, for really exciting programming again.
Planning out like almost a year, basically, right? And yours are revolving. Like third Thursday stuff, so.
Some of it's revolving, some of it, some of it, we have some new opportunities. Really, but, um.
There's gotta be some way we can do that.
Well, ones in advance, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, ones that come up, I mean, it's whatever the board wants, it was developed because, uh, there would be sometimes some and they had speakers and they disrupted county business, and so it, it, it would depend, yes and no, or yeah, you can say.
Well, I'm just talking about the event that she comes into like every year and it's.
Yeah, those are easy. We could do those once a year and have all the dates lined up, those.
Do all those at once, and then the ones that come up.
Ones you know, repeat annually, do it the first year for all of them and you're done. You don't have to do it for each individual one.
So, would I do that during my regular updates, or would I?
No, same, same as you submit them now, submit.
And we'll do it during business meeting, you don't even have to be here.
Yeah, because Commissioners want to have the opportunity to review it, probably two seeing you.
Yeah, I can't think of any events that we do currently that would be during business hours. They're usually on the weekend or after, so hopefully that's a, a plus. Um, however, next year, we're planning a three-day-long music event. Um, of all, right, of all types. Um, that one would start at four, so.
Most of the county offices are closed. But not, not, not judicial, that's not, it's not.
And we could, we could. Skip doing something on that Friday until later.
That could be the air guitar segment.
This out, that's loud.
It actually is pretty loud. You might just check that, it gets closer, you just might check with Barry and see if there's anything scheduled. On that Friday, because I'm guessing they don't go too long on Fridays usually.
Very good master.
Okay. Great, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Be good.
Alright, well, thank you for having me again this year, I appreciate it so much. Um, do, is my.
It is, if you just want us to call.
Not, not that I have anything exciting to show you, I just thought. Our logo's so pretty, right? Okay.
It's misspelled, where are all the O's?
Oh, you think you're funny. So, this year, as in most all other years, we're asking for five thousand dollars, um, to be allocated. This, um, five thousand dollars, very specifically, will go towards our clean, safe and beautiful initiative that we've had going for seventeen years. You're probably aware that Houston Street is, has been undergoing a very long, very extensive. Instruction project. And, uh, when it is done, it's going to be beautiful, which should be at the end of this week. Um, but that just means that we have to put more assets out on the street, flower baskets and flags and Christmas lights and all the things that make downtown beautiful. So you, this contribution would, um, um, directly go towards the clean, safe and beautiful programming that we do. I would like to remind you, if, I, I believe I mentioned this the last time we saw each other, but we did win. The American Planning Association's twenty twenty four Great Places Award, and a lot of it had to do with, um, the fact that we have such a robust. Um, street beautification program and our flower baskets, of course, which are so pretty. Um, so I think you should feel good about, um, your contribution going towards something like that. It makes it. Um, great for visitors to come here, it makes it really wonderful for people to live down here and of course to work down here. I know you guys. Sometimes, like today, is a beautiful day in the neighborhood, and it's just, it's so lovely to walk around downtown. Um, just wanna give you a little bit of, uh, statistical, quick little. Um, fun statistical points about downtown. Right now, we're about ninety-six percent commercially occupied, we're almost a hundred percent residentially occupied, so that's great news for us. In twenty twenty four, we, we, uh, had ten, we, downtown was responsible for ten percent of the total sales. That were in the city of Manhattan. We had twenty-one thousand visitors attend events in downtown, and we got this data from Placer. If you're ever familiar with Placer data, is, uh, um, essentially. Everybody's cellphone tells them, tells Placer where, uh, you are and how long, not who you are. Not who you are.
Sure.
Just that a person of this age has spent this long in this store or this location. Um, this is a software that's used in a lot of communities, most communities use it to track their, to track lots of things. So we, we ask for the numbers every year, um, from the city, and, and that's how we know a lot of, a lot of our data. Also, eleven thousand three hundred and sixty people live within one mile of downtown. We, uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce commissioned, um, a study of. How economic development was going in the city of Manhattan last year, and the overall, um. Scale downtown came out on top as the number one initiative that was successful. And, um, I would say after five hundred million dollars and, and thirty years, that I would hope that to be true, so. Turned out to be true, love that. And, um, we have really, really improved upon our relationships with Kansas State University. And, uh, have great relationships with the School of Architecture. This, uh, music, theater and dance, they're very involved in our programming, our arts and culture programming. And like to think of us now as the front porch to the university, so we're really proud about that. I think the, the new infrastructure at Third and Houston and in the Pierre area where the new museum is. That's, um, gonna be a continuation of what Point's Avenue looks like and, and currently is. Um, I think that that's gonna go a long ways towards where you come over that bridge and into Manhattan, it really is gonna be very beautiful, so. That is my request, do you have any questions for me? Hey, thanks for helping me clarify on the. Use of the plaza, love it. Thank you.
You.
Have a great lunch, a longer lunch.
I'll have time to actually eat the soup.
Warm it up this time.
One fifteen, forty-four.
I'm send, sending my comments.
Yes.
Before I do anything.
Do that.
Last time I got lost when I sent them home. I don't know where they went. They showed on my computer they were sent, so who knows?
Run ones.
Yeah.
The meeting's live for the warning.
All right. Liz, you're up.
Have you on the right page? There we are.
There we go.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon. I'm hungry, so. Sorry. It's that time again. As you all know, I am retiring the end of this month, so this is my last budget presentation before you all, my 20 second one. Oh. By the way, that's how many times I've been here doing this, so I brought Liz with me. She's going to fill in some, some information as I go. Otherwise, I was just going to kind of go through the report if you will and do that as I go. As you know, we provide services for people with intellectual development disabilities, including Riley County, along with Gary Potawatomi and Clay Counties as well. We are currently serving 172 from Riley County. So you are by far the county that we serve the most people with, you know, given the population, that's not too, too surprising. Also, you're very much, I feel like I could skip a lot of this because you guys know, you, what county mill levy does for us, of course, is to provide funding for transportation services. If we did not have county mill levy, accessing services would be nearly impossible for our clientele. 99% of our folks cannot drive. They do not have that capability, the ability for them to get where they need to go, whether it is accessing the community for employment or medical appointments or going shopping, grocery shopping, all of that we make happen. We also, we do partner with Attabus here in town. We have some individuals that are able to take advantage of the Attabus routes, but, but again, they have to have the capability of being able to function through the, the route system. Some can do that very well. Most of our folks can't, but we're very proud of our, our partnership with them. In fact, Liz is on their board as a matter of fact. So we will continue to take advantage of them as much as we possibly can. And again, we use county mill levy dollars for that purpose because Medicaid does not pay for transportation services. Some of those services that they do pay for that are transportation related is non-emergency medical transportation, but that's very limited to just medical appointments and if it's certain criteria. So we do get some funding in that respect for transportation, but that's about it. We also charge our clients, so it is kind of a three-pronged system for reimbursement for transportation, county mill levy. The fees that we charge our clients, we charge them a $65 flat fee to access transportation. We did increase that this past year by $5. We're pretty limited on what we can charge them. Of course, they're on social security disability and then everything that they need to pay for, including room and board, clothing, all that comes from social security. So we can charge them and we do charge them, but we also do not, do not deny services for them if they have the inability to pay. We end up writing off some, some of those charges. And of course, Medicaid does not pay for basic living expenses, so that's where their social security goes to as well. Our budget request for 2026 is a 2% increase, which is a total of $4,654 above what you are, have allocated for us for this year. I do have some information in there regarding our funding history and how it has changed over the last five years. Also, I have our mileage that's attributed to Riley County. We run a route bus throughout Riley County to get individuals that are in our day program only to the day program. And then also we have the mileage that's attributed to our group homes that are in the area as well as far as mileage is.
Lori, Liz, you're up.
There we are.
There we go.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon.
Good morning.
I'm hungry, so.
Sorry.
It's that time again. As you all know, I am retiring the end of this month, so this is my last budget presentation before you all, my twenty second one.
Oh.
By the way, that's how many times I've been here doing this, so I brought Liz with me. She's going to fill in some, some information as I go. Otherwise, I was just gonna kind of go through the report if you will, do that as I go. As you know, we provide services for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Riley County, along with Gary Potawatomi and Clay Counties as well. We are currently serving one hundred and seventy-two from Riley County. So you are by far the county that we serve the most people with, you know, given the population, that's not too, too surprising. Also, you're very much, I feel like I could skip a lot of this because you guys know. You, what County Mill Levy does for us, of course, is to provide funding for transportation services. If we did not have County Mill Levy, accessing services would be nearly impossible for our clientele. Ninety-nine percent of our folks cannot drive. They do not have that capability, the ability for them to get where they need to go. Whether it is accessing the community for employment or medical appointments, or going shopping, grocery shopping, all of that, we make happen. We also, we do partner with Attabus here in town. We have some individuals that are able to take advantage of the Attabus routes, but, but again, they have to have the capability of being able to function through the, the route system. Some can do that very well. Most of our folks can't, but we're very proud of our, our partnership with them. In fact, Liz is on their board. As a matter of fact, so we will continue to take advantage of them as much as we possibly can. And again, we use County Mill Levy dollars for that purpose because Medicaid does not pay for transportation services. Some of those services that they do pay for that are transportation related is non-emergency medical transportation, but that's very limited to just medical appointments and if it's certain criteria. So we do get some funding in that respect for transportation, but that's about it. We also charge our clients, so it is kind of a three-pronged system for reimbursement for transportation, County Mill Levy. The fees that we charge our clients, we charge them a sixty-five-dollar flat fee to access transportation. We did increase that this past year by five dollars. We're pretty limited on what we can charge them. Of course, they're on social security disability. And then everything that they need to pay for, including room and board, clothing, all that comes from social security. So we can charge them and we do charge them, but we also do not, do not deny services for them if they have the inability to pay. We end up writing off some, some of those charges. And of course, Medicaid does not pay for basic living expenses, so that's where their social security goes to as well. Our budget request for 2026 is a two percent increase, which is a total of four thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars above what you are. Have allocated for us for this year. I do have some information in there regarding our funding history and how it has changed over the last five years. Also, I have our mileage that's attributed to Riley County. We run a route bus throughout Riley County to get individuals that are in our day program only to the day program. And then also we have the mileage that's attributed to our group homes that are in the area as well as far as mileage is concerned. I'll also remind you that we use County Mill Levy as a match for KDOT for acquiring large vehicles. We, all of our wheelchair accessible buses are very expensive. I'm sure you're very aware of that. They've gone up tremendously in price. Since COVID, they, you know, they used to cost like sixty-five or seventy thousand. Now you're talking a hundred and thirty-five. That was the last one that we got. And the last two that we got from KDOT was, we ordered them in twenty, we were supposed to get them in twenty twenty and then COVID happened and we didn't take delivery on them until last year.
Geez.
So.
Did they charge you more along the way for those?
No, they absorbed the extra cost of.
You got lucky on that one.
Yes, we were fortunate. The federal government, you know, gave money to the states for that. That was one of the programs that they use that for. They also paid for our match because of that, because originally it was like seventy thousand dollars and yeah, then all of a sudden, yeah. That, so, so we will be expected though to provide the match for our next round of vehicles at that higher rate. So, yeah, okay. I also included in there our audited transportation revenue and expenses, so you can see what those have been for the last four years and what our four-year change has been. Also, I'm expecting our 2026 budget to be fairly flat. We got a whopping one point six seven percent rate increase on our Medicaid money for starting July first. Now, ask me how they came up with one point six seven percent.
Darts.
Yeah. It was called a compromise. Of course, you know, at the state level, in the legislature, they have a joint committee, budget committee that goes and decides the differences between the Senate and the House. Senate had a three percent increase for us. The House didn't have anything, so that, that kind of met in the middle there to give us something. I want, I want to be appreciative of anything that we get, but I'm thinking that this might pay for some of our insurance increases for this next year and that's about it. So we will continue to be paying sixteen dollars an hour starting pay because we need a much more significant bump than that in order to pay our staff more, especially for starting pay. So, yeah, that's, that was kind of it from the legislative session until we start talking about waiting lists. The, the waiting list for services. Right now statewide, it's four thousand seven hundred and six, one hundred and twenty-two are in the Big Lakes area and forty-six are located in Riley County. The average wait time is still about ten years. The legislature did put in money for the, for the waiting list July first, but it was for two hundred individuals. They did put money five hundred in last year, but again, the budget this year, they tried to keep it as flat as they possibly could, so they, they put in money for two hundred. How much it will become to our area is a question mark. Not a lot when you look at, at two hundred. Most of that money will go towards larger metropolitan areas such as Kansas City, Wichita, so.
The, maybe you don't have it, but an estimate on that ten-year wait, I mean, you have to have a large amount of that clientele that's aging out, I would think.
Not necessarily. Actually, the largest numbers are young people coming on to the waiting list. One of my issues with the waiting list and its spending issue ever since they started it is we used to keep track of the waiting list locally, or CDDO did. And then the state took that over, that was during the Brownback administration. They started to manage it at state level rather than locally. The problem with that is at the state level, they cannot tell you with any certainty who is on that waiting list as far as how long they, or when they need services. So you look at a list that says four thousand seven hundred and six, they can't tell you how many of those people need services now. Or if they put it on, put themselves on the list ten years ago in the hope that they will have services when, let's say, when their child was eight, that hopefully when they're eighteen, they will be up for, for funding. So unfortunately, because of the way the waiting list works, there's a lot of manipulation with that. But you can't blame families for getting them put on when you're, when the wait looks like it's going to be ten years. So I find that that four thousand number is kind of deceptive because you don't know how many of those would accept services tomorrow if they were offered. And how many really don't need it until four years from now, or five years from now, or, or whenever. So there's got to be a better way. What that way is, I don't know. But it certainly would be nice to have a much more accurate picture, especially from a provider standpoint, if you knew in the future to, what to plan for. Because that, that's really difficult right now. Uh, let's see, other than that, just, of course, you know, we've limited new admissions to Big Lakes because of the inability to find staff. We have added a, a number of people. We reopened admissions two years ago. We're going to be shutting it down again here really soon. But in that two years, we have added thirty-two people to our day services and twenty-three to residential and we are almost full again. So, well, we can't expand without additional staff, so until that changes and, you know, what we can offer for salaries and so forth is greatly dependent upon Medicaid. I'll touch on just a little bit about the federal government and what we don't know, which is a lot. With the change in the administration, you've been listening to the news as well as I have about the possibility of cuts to Medicaid. They're looking to cut just under nine hundred billion from the, you see, Energy Commerce Committee and that oversees Medicaid. They have to come up with that money somewhere. Ninety percent of our funding is state, federal related and our services are paid for almost exclusively by Medicaid. Now, Medicaid has two buckets. Medicaid has, what you traditionally think of as Medicaid is medical services, health services. Health insurance for, for poor, for the poor people and, and that, and of course, people with disabilities is in, in that bucket for getting healthcare. That's the entitlement service. Then you have other Medicaid, and that's where our services are paid for, under what they call the Home and Community Based Service waiver. It's a waiver because they can waive the entitlement part of Medicaid into a different bucket where they have more, states have more control. That's why you can have a waiting list is because states have that prerogative to do. I will tell you that Kansas is not alone. There are at least thirty, thirty-seven other states that also have waiting lists for IDD services. So when you start talking about cuts at the, at the federal level and how that would filter down to the state, again, you have the one bucket that's required and the other bucket that's not required, where you think you're going to see the cuts. More than likely in the not required bucket, which is where we are. So that gives me pause. I, I, I'm hoping that calmer heads will prevail and we will see that, but we could also see a change in reimbursement rate for the state for home and community based service waivers right now. State provides forty percent of the money and the federal government provides sixty. They can always change that amount. So then the state would have to either come up with the additional amount to make it whole or they would cut what we get reimbursed for the services that we provide. So there's a number of different ways they can, they could cut things. The question is, is what, how we'll do it, and I don't know the answer to that. So we're, we're just going to have to continue to monitor that situation. Another thing that's going on at state level that I wanted to give you a heads up about, because it does have the potential to affect transportation. And that is, the state is working on changing our, our day service requirements. They are doing what they're calling unbundling of services. Right now, we get reimbursed for all the date, different day programs that we provide under a day service umbrella. We get reimbursed and, and there you go. You're now wanting to split that into seven different categories that we bill. We're not sure how. They're trying to figure that out, whether it's hourly, quarterly units, whatever. But the focus of unbundling services is to promote an increase in community access, community inclusion. That's going to be more transportation with the community that we don't get reimbursed for, that we'll be, we'll be looking at higher transportation costs. I'll let Liz talk a little bit more about that because she's on one of those work groups.
Yeah, so we're talking about these several different services that basically a client would have to say, for the next twelve months, each month, I'm going to do this many of this and this many of that and this many of that. And get the insurance company to approve that, yes, that's what they're going to pay for. The state hasn't decided whether they're going to do a single-tier rate, but currently we're on a five-tier rate with some extraordinary funding tiers on top of that. There, you have talked about going to a single tier or possibly a three-tier. So then you're looking at three different tiers for all of the seven different services as well. So from a budgetary standpoint, it's a nightmare on top of the amount of administrative work that that's going to create for our accounting department and our staff to track. So we're advocating hard on trying to make that as simple as possible and, and maintain choice, because my, my concern right now is we offer a lot of wonderful services during the day that our clients can just choose minute by minute what they want to do, and now we're locking them down into having to put that on a plan of care that the insurance then approves for them on how they're going to spend their time. And once they're out of units, then what? Also looking at how they're bleeding over into weekend and, and evening hours as potentially day service hours, and that's concerning for me because they only pay for so many hours during the day, but we provide longer than that. So usually by Friday, they've already used all of their units for many of our clients, but we.
We call it Free Friday.
Because we need to provide support while their parents are at work and so, or their guardians or their caretakers if they're in our day-only program. So if they do that and like they start billing day services on Saturday for another residential provider that also provides day services, then we're short on Thursday. And then do we not serve them on Thursday, or do they serve them without getting paid for day services? It's very complicated and confusing. When I talk to the state about how we need to make sure we keep choice in all of this, they say, yeah, this is going to be really tricky. So that's, that's kind of where we are.
So that has the potential for changing our transportation costs this next year. Don't, again, don't know how or how much or what it's going to look like, so I'll say good luck, Liz. Yeah, well, and as, as I told her though, you know, when I took over, you know, twenty years ago, what I had to deal with was, we had one, there was one other provider of services in town and they decided to close like the week after I started this, you know, so I had to figure out how to absorb twenty-five new clients like that. So we all have our challenges. This is Liz's going for, but it does have, again, the, the chance of the impact on transportation you need to be aware of. And she'll keep you apprised of, of their progress and, and what that means going forward. So unless I, you have any questions for me, that's all I got. I hope you got your invitation to my retirement party. I hope that you can come. So that's on the twenty-ninth at the Discovery Center, so looking forward to, to that. And on the thirtieth, we're having our parties with our clients and staff. We're going to have ice cream and somebody keep getting asked about them, when they're getting their ice creams. So that's all I got for you.
Lori, good luck in retirement. Thanks for all you've done. Always appreciated meeting with you.
Yeah, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the, the support that I have from you all. Our counties have been just really wonderful to work with. If there's any questions, you always, you know, come and ask me. You don't make any assumptions. You, you ask what's going on and I always appreciate that. And again, we, we couldn't do what we do at Big Lakes without you, so thank you very much.
Go to retirement.
I will. Oh, and I, I'm not going to be totally gone. I'm going to continue to help Liz with running the foundation for a while while she gets her feet wet with unbundling her day services and all that stuff that's involved with that. I, I feel very lucky because again, Liz has been at Big Lakes for eighteen years, so she has a lot of good knowledge going into this. So she's going to hit the ground running and be awesome. So I'm, I'm really excited about that, so.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say that following hers makes my, my problems with my nose go. Hi, I'm Jenny Peterson, president of the Raleigh County Genealogical Society still, and I'm back again this year to thank you again for the support you do give us. We are in Platte House, the historic eighteen seventy-one Platte House, which you own, and thankfully right now are helping us fix a few things on. The, one of the gutters flew off in the winter storm and the front porch or the porch we enter through is, we're starting work on it tomorrow to keep us from crashing through the floorboards, which we've been doing, so.
Good idea.
A few things like that taking place. But on top of that, you've been giving us thirty-five hundred dollars towards our utilities, which we much appreciate. Our request does ask for a slight bump to five thousand, which more closely rec, of course, bonds with our utility costs. But we are appreciative of, of the support we get from you and everything that, that you do give us. As you know, we're a volunteer organization. There are about fifteen of us on the board and another fifteen to twenty that volunteer in other capacities, mostly as the librarians that keep the library open four days a week, two mornings and four afternoons. We see that our traffic is heavier in the afternoons than in the mornings, but there are those clients that do like to come in the morning. We had over three hundred researcher visits this year and another six hundred volunteers who are in and out, a lot of them doing research too, of course. We get a lot of phone calls. We get email inquiries. So there are days we don't have any traffic at all, but in those days, we're trying to look through the materials we have on hand and find new local names that we can add to our database, because one of our biggest claims to fame is our surname search feature, which allows us to go in and look for your ancestor by name and find all the different places that we have found that his name was mentioned, and then you can pull those up easily. I found that invaluable in my own research. We also, of course, have digitized over the years a lot of the old documents, probate records, naturalizations, voter lists, town histories and things. One of the things we're trying, I learned this year was that not everybody realizes we have those. I found the museum and the county, somebody office at county level anyway, register of deeds probably, somebody pouring over the microfilm when in fact we had digitized them. They could have searched by name online if it was known. So we're trying to get the word out a little bit better as to what some of the availability is. We're trying to interact with the Raleigh County Museum more directly and the Chapman Center at the university and other places in town and try to make sure we all know what each other has that can support our, our research. I'll move on to membership. We, we are supported primarily by memberships, thirty dollars a year. We have a hundred and thirty-two personal ones, so that obviously doesn't pay all the bills. The other biggie is donations. We have some donors who are very kind to us and that has helped us keep afloat. So we're, we're thankful for that. We provide our members with a monthly newsletter, which we call the FYI, but we're also on Facebook. We have a Facebook presence and try to get word out, sharing not only information about our programs, but also the ones at the Historical Museum and other places that we find we overlap with. We have a bi-year or twice a year Kansas Ken that comes out that tells stories of the local interest. We just published the latest one Friday. The mail copy hasn't gone out yet, but it's online if anybody wants to see it, and they are online free for anybody who wants to look at them too. So we have a First Friday webinar where we have people that come into the office or into the library to watch and learn and talk about some aspect of, of genealogy. Whether it be how to prove that you're an Indian, which was what last Friday's program was, or other topics of, of interest. We have about ten people that come to that, and then we have our round table on the third Friday of each month out at the Vista Drive-In where we have another ten to twelve people show up just for an open-ended conversation about anything having to do with family history, genealogy. Topics that, again, and it's interesting to see that they aren't the same people. I mean, it's a, it's a different group that you attract different ways. They're not all members, but they have found us somewhere in the, in the paper or something and decided to join us, and we've gotten some, some new contacts that way that have been very interesting. Our biggest thing this year has been our Sunday programs. We've been pulling in fifty to seventy-five people every time we have a Sunday program once a month. And this year, they did focus on the history of Manhattan in correlation with the new markers we've been putting up around, I'll talk about more in a minute. But this coming year now, we're focusing on things a little broader. The one we just had two Sundays ago now was on the Wallsburg Church and the Swedish settlers, the Wallsburg area. So we're trying to incorporate the whole county in our programming. We are sponsoring again this year the Biennial Genealogy and History Fair in August. We'll be having that at Potter Hall, August sixteenth in conjunction with the Raleigh County Museum and the. And, um, the res- preservation group here in town too. And then we have a pie party in September where we have the church ladies going to be playing on the lawn of the library and we all gather around, have ice cream and pie and listen to music on a pretty Sunday afternoon in September. So we try to pull in the community, let them know we're out there and things that are happening. Um, the last thing I want to talk about is that this year, our special project was the walking through history on the Linear Trail. We had our dedication of the first of the markers that went up in June twenty-second, uh, along with the one that was on the, under the, um, oh, I can't even talk, called Indian Village. And now just in the last for two, the last three have gone up. So all five now of our first year markers are up and in place. And this coming year, we're going to have five more go up that mark with the Canton Town site, the opening of Kansas Territory, the town of Boston site, flooding in Manhattan and the railroads impacted Manhattan. And then we're also going to add the, um, Platte House marker at the library itself in our yard to help people learn about that. So all of these are geared towards having people using the rail trail, stop, read a little bit about Manhattan history and move on on their activities. So we, we're really pleased with that. And in relation to that, we're doing another coloring book. They did a coloring book a few years ago about influential women in Riley County and this one's going to be more tied to what the trail markers are talking about with the history. So with that, are there any questions? Well, we appreciate having the chance to present to you and, and look forward to continuing the relationship. Am I allowed to hand out something here? Sure, final. I just have a picture of the walking through trail and a picture of the trail markers. And you're going to have to share with him. Thank you so much.
Good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, well, good afternoon, insurance. My name is Jared, I'm with the Wintills Metropolitan Organization. Been doing a lot recently, uh, here to discuss our twenty twenty-six budget request. But just as an overview again, the NPO is a federally designated entity. When Manhattan went over fifty thousand in twenty thirteen, it registered the, it triggered the formation of the NPO. And we serve as the region's transportation policymaking organization. We have, uh, a policy board. Commissioner Ford sits on it for Raleigh County. You can see there's City Manhattan, Junction City, Womigo, and then Gary Potawatomi in Riley Counties as well as a KDOT representative. And then our non-voting members there as well. This is the NPO region. The green dotted line here around Manhattan is what must be included in the NPO. So most of it is in Riley County over towards Ogden. Uh, Junction City chooses to join the NPO, so the NPO overall boundary is the orange sideline. And then we also extend after twenty seventeen east of Womigo, so that's the entire NPO area. So like I said, the green dashed area around Manhattan has to be included. Um, and then any areas that could potentially be urbanized in the next twenty years. Just going to hit on a few key, uh, projects that we work on. The tip or transportation, transportation improvement program. We will be updating this this year. Any project that has state or federal funding in it must be included in the tip before funding can be allocated. Projects have to have dedicated funding source. That's the key with that. This is short-term planning. We also have a long-range, uh, transportation plan called Connect Twenty-Fifty we've been working on. It goes out twenty-five years at this point. Uh, we'll be, we've already had a series of public meetings on that. We will be having more as this goes forward. You may have heard about the US Twenty-four Corridor Management Plan update. I've been to see you about three times this month. Uh, I just want to mention that we are working on that as well as the second connection cost benefit analysis. Those things are of course tied together, so those things are moving forward. As far, as far as money, uh, is concerned, so our total budget up at the top here is two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. CPG is our competitive planning grant and so complete streets work we do gets paid back at a hundred percent. So our, so we subtract out that twenty-two thousand, so our new budget is two sixty-four oh seventy-two. And the state and federal government pays eighty percent of this, of the budget through CPG. And so local jurisdictions are on the hook for twenty percent, which is fifty-two eight fourteen. Then that twenty percent is then subdivided by the percentage of population that makes up the NPO. So Riley County is about five percent when you take out Manhattan, five percent of the population. So you're paying five percent of the twenty, so two thousand six hundred forty dollars. You can see on the left here. It's been up and down all over the place. Our budget is very driven by, um, the projects we work on and if we have any consultants. As well in two thousand nineteen and twenty, there were some issues with funding. I think I may have mentioned that KDOT a few weeks ago withdrew eighty-five thousand dollars from our budget for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. But we have carryover and so we're going to be able to make this work. And so just as a comparison, twenty-six forty, this year it was thirty-three fifty-eight in twenty twenty-five. Pointing out, we do more than twenty-six hundred and forty dollars with the work in Raleigh County. But that's our request. Stand for questions. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you send me a link for the meeting today?
Uh, yeah, an actual link. Yeah, I should be able to do that here.
For some reason it didn't show up on my calendar or anything, so.
Yeah, I don't think I sent a link. I just have the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I can send you a.
Yeah, otherwise I'll have to try to copy. Probably won't work. No, I don't have anything. Long, long day enough.
Well, I would make a motion to adjourn the May fifth meeting of Raleigh County Commissioner.
Second.
Noon and second.